So blessed.
Will Paul this meeting in the Palaca Planning Board to um for September the fifth, two thousand twenty-three to order? If you Pastor Mulberry?
Yes, sir, I am here.
Okay, if you would please rise, we will ask Pa- Pastor Mulberry to do the invocation. And Chase, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
Good evening, everyone. Father, we thank you once again for your loving kindness. And certainly, God, for the multitude of your tender mercy. Here we are again, we in your presence. And we need your wisdom and guidance. And all that we undergird to do, Father, to move the city forward. We pray, God, for the leadership of this committee. You were blessed continuously, that you would give strength. Touch in the name of Jesus. God, we thank you for wisdom. To lead forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Have a seat. Ms. Krantz, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Vice Chair Chase Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Say Wallace.
Wallace. Amy was talking. Mr. Deluch is not present for the record. Ms. Owens. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Alls.
Here.
And Chairman Killebrew.
Here.
We do have a quorum in the chambers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Krantz. Oh, now read the appeal and procedures and next part of communication. This notice is for any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any matter. Considered at any such meeting will need a record of the proceedings. And for such purpose may need to ensure that the verba- that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made. Which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Florida statutes two eighty-six dash zero one zero five. Now we need to appeal approve the minute minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second? Excuse me, let me redo that. Need a motion to appeal the min- approval of minutes for July the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
So make a motion that we approve the minutes for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll say it.
Second motion, all those approve, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Now I need approval of the minutes for our motion for August the first, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from August first, twenty twenty-three.
There ever second? Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Here none? Motion passes. Move into the public comments. Um, does anybody here wish just to speak to the board about anything in general, not anything that's on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that part of it. And we'll move on to regular business. Ms. Walsh, you want to present us with PB twenty-two, twenty-eight, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lisa Walsh, Planning Director. This application is for a preliminary subdivision plat review. For Ivy Street. You all have seen this before last year. But they did not meet the deadline to submit their final plat approval, and so there they decided, the applicant decided to start over again. So that they can reset the clock, so that they uh uh will not only have the six month time period to submit a final final plat, they are also requesting an additional six month extension. So if this plat is approved here, they will have one year to submit a final plat back to the planning board. For the subdivision. It's a three lot subdivision on Ivy Street. And I'll be happy to happy and happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any question, Ms. Walsh? Okay. You want me to present? Want to present that to us, or is that what we're, is that all we're doing?
Just approving the preliminary plat, right?
I need a motion, or I need to open the floor. Anybody that wants to speak to or for? Did you fill out a yellow sheet for me, please? Yellow sheet? Yeah, sorry.
I just had a question about it.
When when we were here last time, state your name and address for the record, please.
John Jarvis, I'm at twenty-nine seventeen Saint Johns Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, last time we were here, we were splitting the uh property into three sections. I I didn't didn't notice this little tail end piece that was coming off of the uh their land. That goes down that right away. I didn't notice that. That is that a change?
I'm a little
Oh, slimmer to the right of the the green.
Yes. Yes, is that? Is that new? Cause on the original one, it was just splitting them to three properties. That wasn't on there.
Ms. Walsh? I can't answer that question. It's this little piece right here.
Right there. I'm sorry, that doesn't show up on their survey. Their survey only covers.
Uh huh, that's what I meant. Th- this was when.
I think that that, sir, is actually because I see it down here and down here on these other notifications, it's really small to read. I think that that is a shadow for the text behind that, that's in that little space, because there is no tail end on this survey.
Okay, so so thi- this is nothing right there?
That's correct.
Okay, that's. Yeah, you see where it looks like the green is extended off the property there.
Well.
Yeah.
And I think it's the shadow of the text on the ad. On the survey, there is no tail.
That's all I'm asking, okay? Let me get this filled out.
Alright. If there's anybody else that would like to speak to or for this? Okay, here and then I will move on from the public to close that to the the board. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, last meeting, we had discussion on whether or not to approve the uh six month this extension. The board came with that. Do we need to discuss that further?
I think I think at the last meeting, it was not only six months, but I think they were trying, somebody said something about extending out and going ahead and extending out another six months after that.
They've requested that again, correct, staff?
That is correct, so they would have a whole year. If you approve the extension, and that should also be part of your motion.
Yes. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready if y'all are ready.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the board approve the request for the preliminary subdivision plat review for the Ivy Street subdivision with the requested six month extension.
I hear a second? Then we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes. Now we're moving on to PB K case PB twenty-three, twenty-one, request for preliminary subdivision plat review for Isaiah Place subdivision. Ms. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lisa Walsh, Plan Director. This is not something that you have seen before. But it's Isaiah Place out on Kelly Smith School Road between Round Lake Road and Gale Lane. Um. Sunny, are you looking for the new map? Thank you, ma'am. This is also a three lot subdivision on the north side of Kelly Smith School Road. It's been reviewed by all of the City of Palaca departments. There were no comments. Staff has reviewed the plat preliminary plat and found it in compliance with the Palaca Code of Ordinances. The proposed subdivision meets the development standards for the requested R-one zoning, that is a minimum of six thousand square feet for each lot and minimum sixty foot lot widths. The applicant's working with the Public Works Department to provide water and sewer to each proposed lot. And again, they are requesting an additional six month time extension to submit a final plat. So they would have, again, one year from today if you approve this plat. And I can answer any questions you have.
Anybody on board have a question, Ms. Walsh? Okay, seeing none. I will open this up to public speaking. Um. I have a yellow card coming up, Charlie.
Good afternoon, everybody. Charlie Douglas, one one seven North Second Street. I'm here with the applicant. And just for a little bit of context and clarification. The request, as Ms. Walsh has said, is a six month time extension to submit the final plat with the building plans so that we don't have to start from scratch. Uh, these are three lots. Point one six acres each. And they will have single family homes right there on Kelly Smith School Road. The lot sizes match the zoning of the other lot that was split on the southeast corner. And this does not involve the rest of the parcel and the property to the north that goes all the way to Reed Street. This is only for those three lots. There is water and sewer available. Uh, there are no wetlands or other issues with the lots. And we have engaged Stephen Stephen Speaks to do the plat review for the city. And also, Mr. Stephen Collins from Land Title to send uh plat certification and opinion of title. So again, our request is a six month time extension to submit the final plat.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wise? Do you want this?
Yes, sir. I didn't know I couldn't speak.
Thank you, you're fine.
My name is Robert A. Wise, one fifty Kelly Smith School Road. I've lived here, I'm I'm I've lived here about eighty years. Most of my adult life. Born and raised in Palaca. And I got a this uh parcel of land that's up for development is two lots from my home. Uh, and I object to it. On the grounds that uh it it's a butt a budding to Kelly Smith School Road. Has anybody been out in that area that where school takes in and takes out? You can't get around. I can have a hard enough time getting out of my yard. And I know enough living in this county and this thing, if there's something gonna come to pass, it's gonna pass. If it does pass, I won't like to see some restrictions on it. One of them would be that there would be no access to Kelly Smith School from this property. Because traffic is horrendous enough. Also, there'd be some barriers put up between this property and the lot next to me, which is Mr. Noble lives there. I wonder who lives on the other side of it. But I object wholeheartedly to it. Because the density is is bad in that area. And uh that's basically what I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wise.
Bye.
Anybody else like to speak to this? Okay, we'll close the public here inside of it, or the public speaking part of it. And open it up for discussion to the board. Anybody on the board? Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
I don't see how to access this property without utilizing Kelly Smith School Road. Am I mis- am I not looking at that correctly?
No, I I couldn't figure out how to access it from any other roads either. Unless you put an easement all the way down the property to isn't the other end of that property? The north end of that property, yeah, twenty for eleven. So unless you put an easement all the way down that full property. And then you're gonna have to put addresses, and then you're gonna have to get probably DOT involved for access to twenty and signs that say only right turns, and then you're
I just.
I I don't think there's, I I honestly don't think there's any way you could force somebody to.
Ms. Wilson?
The um who owns, who owns that parcel? Do you know that the whole thing, what's remaining?
They do.
It's all the same owner?
All the same owner. They're
Okay.
They're just subdividing it for the residential.
But they they do.
So later on, if they decide to do something else that comes off for a loud name. They have that opportunity.
Mr. Rose?
Okay, so we're just asking for the extension now. When the final plat review comes down the pipe, we can certainly entertain any questions uh for neighbors. Uh, it is zoned commercial now, the entirety of it. Um, so we're we're trying to be more in line with the spirit of the neighborhood and going down to R-one, that's not before the board right now, but that is a separate item, the rezoning going down to R-one uh for these three lots. And also the way that the traffic is the backup during school um drop off and pickup is not just backed up on Kelly Smith Road, but it also lines north and also onto Reed Street. So the Reed Street side would also be impacted, but um again, that might be too premature on easement versus no easement. Uh, because that that would really destroy the the different uses of the the property as a whole. Uh, we would advocate for the access from Kelly Smith School Road for safety reasons. Uh on on the three lots that we're asking for the plat extension. I'm sorry. Read, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Bro.
Okay. Are we clear on that now? Any other discussion?
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that this board approve the preliminary subdivision plat review for the Azalea Place subdivision with the six month extension that was requested.
Have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, both. Seeing none, motion passes. Now we're moving on to case PB twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-four. Request to annex the same three parcels into the city limits. Walsh? Oh.
That'll be me this evening.
I'm sorry.
Uh, good evening. My name's Casey Chief. I'm the new-ish planner here with the City of Palatka. I uh, I'll be presenting some of these cases and some of these annexations this evening, so feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Uh. So this is case PB twenty-three, twenty-four. It's an annexation um over on Reed Street. It's pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward case. Uh, it's three parcels annexing into the city limits for city water and sewerage. Uh, it's a request to annex three adjacent parcels into the city that total of total two point one two acres. The proposed use for the site is classified as motel. The proposed future land use will be commercial, and the proposed zoning will be intensive commercial C-two. Hotels and motels are permissible use uh permissible usage in the C-two zoning designation per section ninety-four dash one forty-nine B-eight. The proposed site is in a commercial corridor near the intersection of State Roads one hundred and nineteen. Uh, the proposed use is non-residential and will not increase the population of the City of Palatka. Um, if you go to, and I'm reading off the staff report from your all's packets. Uh, you can see the subject parcels are in figure one on page two, as well as some of the surrounding usage uh uses on future land use elements, uh as well as the zoning in table one. Uh, I'm gonna skip ahead here to page four, you see the future land use change analysis. You can see the current land use is unincorporated Putnam County Urban Services. And the propose the the applicant would like to uh change to uh City of Palatka Commercial and the future land use settlement. Skipping ahead again to zoning on page six. Uh, again, we have unincorporated C-two currently, uh and the applicant would like to change that to uh C-two City of Palatka. Um, if I'm going too fast, please feel free to ask any questions, um, or I can just go right into the recommendations.
This property, just for the board, this is where the high level is now, correct?
Yes.
And the lot next to it, right?
Yeah.
High level and part of the lot.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we that would be a question for the applicant, because all we have on the application is potentially motel usage. Uh, currently, yeah, to answer the the earlier question, uh, there's three parcels and the high level lounge is only takes up one of them, which I believe is is on the um it's on the middle parcel, thirty-eight, twenty-one Reed Street. There aren't any other questions. Um, I can just say staff recommends annexation of the parcels at thirty-eight, twenty-five, thirty-eight, nineteen, and thirty-eight, twenty-one Reed Street. Uh, staff recommends amending the future land use designation of parcels, and I'll say the numbers in a bit, at thirty-eight, twenty-five Reed Street, thirty-eight, nineteen Reed Street, and thirty-eight, twenty-one Reed Street from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palatka Commercial. And staff recommends uh amending the zoning of the same parcels at thirty-eight, twenty-five, thirty-eight, nineteen, and thirty-eight, twenty-one Reed Street from Putnam County General Commercial to City of Palatka Intensive Commercial, both C-two. That can be those parcel numbers again, if you want them.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, that would again be a question, I think, for the applicant, yeah. Well, I it was closed when I was putting the signs up there, but I'll I'll take your word for it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to speak to this from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will close that part of the hearing and open it up to the board. Board have any discussion? Any other questions? Seeing none, was the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that uh we approve the annexation of thirteen or thirty-eight, nineteen, thirty-eight, twenty-one, and thirty-eight, twenty-five Reed Street.
Second that.
Hearing a second of motion in a second. Call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seeing none, motion passes.
Got two more pieces of that.
Yeah. I'm looking for them. We got them. Yeah, that's why mine are numbered, I'm sorry. Yeah, some looking for them. And we've got to do the Okay. Yeah, there. There's forty-six. Yeah.
Ready for a stand?
I'm sorry.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion uh that we approve the proposed amendment of the land use from Putnam County Urban Service to City of Plaque Commercial for thirty-eight, nineteen, thirty-eight, twenty-one, and thirty-eight, twenty-five Reed Street.
Second that.
That was motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I say aye. Seeing none, motion passes. And now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion uh that we approve the proposed amendment of the zoning from Putnam County General Commercial C-two to City of Plaque Intensive Commercial C-two for thirty-eight, nineteen, thirty-eight, twenty-one, and thirty-eight, twenty-five Reed Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, no, motion passes now. Okay, now we're moving on to these numbers on the bottom of this thing. Mess me up a little bit. Page sixty. PB case twenty-three dash eighteen, request annex one parcel totaling zero point three acres into the city limits. And amend the future land use from Putnam County Urban Services to Black Residential Low. Yes, sir.
Uh, same deal with this one. Uh, another annexation's pretty straightforward. It's a single family home uh for the purposes of city water. Annexing for the purposes of city water and sewerage. Approximately point three one acres into the city. As you were saying, uh, future land use from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palatka Residential Low and to rezone from Putnam County Residential. Single family R-one to City of Palatka. Single family R-one. Uh, you can see on page, well, your pages are different than mine. On page two of my staff report, subject site is shown in orange, as well as you can see on table one, the usage usage around it is, for the most part, for the most part, a lot of other single family residences. Um most almost every parcel in the area is in the city limits with the exception of one. Um. Again, different page number, but page four, future land use change would be, again, urban service, unincorporated urban services to uh residential low, City of Palatka on the future land use element, and would be R-one unincorporated uh Putnam County to R-one City of Palatka on the zoning map. I can go into uh staff recommends that we approve the annexation for seven oh four Elmwood Avenue for the purposes of connection to City of Placa Water and Sewer. As the district is contiguous, does not contribute to urban sprawl, does not create an undue burden to the city's water and sewer system, nor violates any of the requirements listed in uh Placa Municipal Code, section ninety-four dash thirty-eight F-one A through Q. Uh, staff recommends the planning board amend the district boundary, future land use element designation from unincorporated urban services to City of Placa Residential Low. I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself. And staff recommends planning board amend the district boundary for the zoning map from unincorporated residential, single family R-one to City of Palatka Residential, single family R-one.
Board have any questions? Anybody in the audience like to speak to that? Seeing none, I bring that back to the board. But it's a pleasure of the board. Anybody got any discussion or? Go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the annexation of seven zero four Elmwood Avenue into the sea limits of Palatka.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You don't want to fight over it?
Nope. You can have it.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the proposed amendment of the land use from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Black of Residential Low for seven zero four Elmwood Avenue.
A motion needs a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye, aye. All those opposed, same time. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the proposed amendment of the zoning from Putnam County Residential Single Family R one to City of Palatka Residential Single Family R one for seven zero four Elmwood Avenue.
Have a motion, need a second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, aye, all those opposed. Same sign, motion passes unanimously. Is that all three of them?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to PB case twenty-three, twenty-six. Request annex one parcel totaling zero point, totally zero point six two acres into the city limits. Amend the future land use from Putnam County Urban Reserve to Black Residential Low and zoning category from Putnam County Residential to family R two to Black Residential to family R two. Sir. What is your name again? I'm sorry.
It's Casey.
Casey.
I'm the planner one here with the city. So this is a point, point E on the agendas, case PB twenty-three, twenty-six. It's another annexation. Uh, again, pretty straightforward, a little bit like the last one. Uh, this is a triplex, uh, annexing into the city for, uh, city water and sewage. Um, as you were saying, it's point six two acres. Uh, they want to, they want to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Reserve to the City of Palatka Residential Low. And rezone from Putnam County Residential to family R two to City of Platte to family residential R two. Uh, this residential annexation of a triplex may increase the population of the city of Palatka by seven persons. As you can see on the, on the cover page, per U S Census Bureau estimates. Again, the page numbers are different from my staff reports versus yours, but, uh, you can see the subject property on the second page of that staff report highlighted in orange. It's a parcel at the corner of High Lawn and First Avenue. You can see as well as table one, um, kind of a mixed neighborhood. Um, you can see the, the individual properties broken down, but there are a number of, um, commercial properties to the north as well as a lot of residential, single family and, uh, residential. Well, single family in that neighborhood. So again, going back, uh, page four on mine, uh, future land use change analysis, analysis would, would have it go from urban reserve, unincorporated Putnam County to residential low city of Palatka. And again, skipping ahead, zoning map, uh, would be changing over from current zoning, which is R two unincorporated Putnam County to R two uh, city of Palatka. Uh, staff recommendation is approval of the annexation of two oh four High Lawn Avenue for the purpose of connection to City of Platte Water and Sewer. Staff recommends the planning board amend the district boundary, future land use map designation from unincorporated urban reserve to City of Palatka Residential Low. Uh, and staff also recommends, uh, the planning board amends the district boundary for the zoning map from unincorporated on an, unincorporated residential, two family R two to City of Palatka Residential, two family R two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? From the board? Anybody in the audience would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Yes, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the annexation of two zero four High Lawn Avenue into the city limits of Black.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the proposed amendment of the land use from Putnam County Urban Reserve to City of Palatka Residential Low for two zero four High Lawn Avenue.
I have a motion in a second.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, this, that motion passes unanimously. Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the proposed amendment of the zoning from Putnam County Residential Two Family to City of Black Residential Two Family for two zero four High Lawn Avenue.
Have a motion in a second.
Okay.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Now moving on to case PB twenty-three dash seventeen. Oh, Miss Walsh. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. Likewise. This is a request for a manufacturing facility on a four point zero five acre site within the M one zoning district as a conditional use. There is a draft site plan attached. The subject parcel was annexed into the city limits in twenty twenty-one. It's located on the north side of Building Avenue, south of Peter Street and east of North Palm Avenue, west of Pine Street. The site and use will not add to the population of Palatka. It is this, as it is proposed to be a non-residential use. There are no existing structures on the property. It has an, currently has an industrial future land use and designation and is zoned City of Palatka M one. So this will not be a zoning change. It's simply a conditional use. It's located near another concrete manufacturing within a quarter mile to the south that's located on Pine Street. That manufacturing facility, concrete manufacturing facility is in the county. It's not in the city limits. Within the M one zoning category, concrete manufacturing facilities are covered as a conditional use under section ninety-four dash one fifty-one E five of the Palatka Municipal Code. What states any industrial use not specifically permitted or prohibited, which is otherwise lawful, may be permitted as a conditional use. Staff has reviewed all of the relevant criteria under the conditional use section of the code. And all of the, uh, criteria have been satisfied. We also, those suggest that the planning board consider other factors of concern in your, your determination of approval or denial. One of those, uh, those factors include, um, how the applicant will address increased traffic volume in the area. What measures will be taken to ensure heavier vehicles do not damage the street surfaces? The applicant must address whether larger vehicles will block or impede neighborhood traffic. They must address noise, pollution and other disturbances brought about by industrial use, including but not limited to dust mitigation. They must address stormwater runoff from the site and they must address how the industrial use of the site will impact nearby residences. Staff recommends the approval with the following conditions of the conditional use. A detailed site plan is required, a traffic impact study is required and parking and stacking lanes must be provided. The board may choose to add conditional, uh, I'm sorry, additional conditions based on the factors noted previously above the approval. Uh, above the staff recommendation that you see in your staff report. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody in the board having questions, Miss Walsh? Okay, thank you, Miss Walsh. Did you have something, Miss Wilson? Anybody from the audience want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we don't really have a presentation, but can answer the questions of our representative.
Okay, so anybody got any questions of the applicant?
Are they currently using the property right now for rock? Storage and sale?
If you don't mind, Miss Young, would you step to the podium?
George Young, two, two, to North Third Street on the, uh, agent for the applicant. Um, to answer your question, yes, they currently have stored rock, crushed rock, those type things on the property now.
Then it's what you get. Anybody?
Yeah, that property has always been used for that type of stuff.
It has.
Yeah.
It has a history of it and
It's actually been quite a while.
Right.
That is correct. We're just trying to make sure we, we comply with the, the, the new rules.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Miss Young. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, I'll bring that back to the board. Any question, any discussion amongst board? Do I have a motion? You're doing so well, Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the board approve the conditional use for a concrete manufacturing facility on parcel zero one dash one zero dash twenty-six dash eight six five zero dash zero zero two zero dash zero zero four zero. Case number PB twenty-three dash seventeen. Subject to the conditions that a detailed site plan, uh, be required. A traffic impact study be required, uh, and parking and stacking lanes be provided.
Do you have a motion? Have a second. A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, I said aye. All those opposed, seeing none. Motion passes. Being nothing else. Going to have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.